Jolima, do you have anything? Awesome. All right, let's go ahead and move right into North Platte River Restoration Process and update.
Mayor, councilors, good evening. So this is a great opportunity to update the council, including some of our newer members, who maybe not heard a detailed overview of the Platte River Restoration Project in recent history. This is a decades-long project that encompasses a number of partners, many of which are here in the room tonight. You know, it's an effort to improve one of our community's greatest assets, the North Platte River. And so with that, I would really like to just turn it over to Jolene Martinez, who has spearheaded this effort for quite a long time, and give her the opportunity to walk you through some of the history, where we're at, and where we hope to go in the near future.
Hello, mayor, councilors. This will be a little bit of an unconventional presentation. We have a lot of people in the room tonight that have been part of this project for all of these years. So at any time during the presentation, please feel free to stop and ask a question. I don't think there's a question that we won't be able to answer. And I will call on various people in the room to do that. And so we have our TC Dinkins will be helping me later on in the presentation. And amongst us, he's known as the main river designer. He's a restoration engineer and has done a lot of the design and comes up and fishes the reaches to make sure that his work is good. So you'll hear him talk about that, too. So without further ado, in 2007, this was our Clarion call. Get outside, get involved, get outside, save a river, you, yes, you. And the first year, we did a volunteer day and 300 people responded. And so we started our project, and we have project principles that I want to go through. Slides are hard to read, but we can't leave out the photos. So if we took the photos out, it'd be easier. I'm going to go back a second. If you notice, this was in 2007 or earlier, before we started removing Russian olives. Look how all the banks are just totally inundated, especially on River Left with Russian olives. This was probably two years later or so. You'll see we've started removing Russian olives on River Left. But some of our principles. Okay, the river is not just the water. I learned this. It's also the banks, which includes riparian, wetlands, and uplands. Wherever possible, river for our property should be publicly owned. It protects the resource, and most funders require it. We have an opportunity for a rare urban natural interface that few cities can have, and we call it our riparian wow. I know you, few cities in the world can have what we have in Casper, Wyoming, with the North Platte River running through it. We also decided early on that with the river being the endpoint of all stormwater outfalls, that we would redirect all stormwater outfalls where we could into wetlands. And if we need to describe why wetlands, I'm going to call on someone to talk about that. Wetlands and riparian areas in Wyoming are rare and very precious. Wyoming is very dry. We need to protect them. The North Platte River is Casper's most important resource. Clean, fresh water is a finite and scarce resource all over the world. We need to protect it. Rigorous science will inform this project. And the North Platte River is a whole system from beginning to end. Any change in one area impacts all other areas. And that's from the start to the end in the Missouri, and we'll show some of that. So this is a video that was made by our volunteers in 2014, right before we started the construction. Do we have signed? And then you'll see we updated it in 2017. So you'll see former Mayor Betoglio make a statement. And then you will also see Eli Bebaut, who was president of the Senate, make a statement. As he's getting this ready, I want to talk about the role that Eli Bebaut has played in our river restoration. He fishes the Two Fly Tournament. You'll hear me talk about that. But when the Wyoming Wildlife-
Oops, sorry.
-Natural Resource Trust came into being, he was one of the proponents down in the legislature. And when we put a $2 million grant before them, it has to be approved by the legislature. Many of our Natrona County legislators did not support it, and Eli shepherded it through. And that's how Casper got the largest Wyoming Wildlife and Natural Resources Trust grant so far for a single project. And he's in our video. We're going to do the video at the end. Is that what you're telling me?
I need just a moment, please.
We might do the video at the end. That'll be okay. So far, any questions? Any really good ones?
Any questions from council?
I do have one about the stormwater, but I can ask it whenever.
Well, he's doing the video. Ask, please.
Okay. Well, so my question is, and maybe there's more context coming, but I'm just curious about if there's a concern about the stormwater going into those riparian areas about possible pollutants in that stormwater as opposed to the fresh river water? Is that-
I'm looking who-
Excellent filter.
That's the filter. Okay.
So I'm bringing up John McCoy.
Okay.
And so we put it into wetlands. And that's a really good question, because we're putting contaminants into wetlands. And so John McCoy from Gamin Fish can answer that.
Mayor Council. So yeah, so wetlands actually act as filters for contaminated water. So you may find it sometimes, maybe you're pulling some cattails out or something. You'll see like, you'll see stuff come up out of it sometimes, like oil and stuff. But yeah, they'll hold that material and break it down, get it back to like base level elements. So it's a cleaning benefit there. So all the stuff comes off of parking lots, highways, roads. So it actually ends up cleaning the water, whereas without those, it just goes directly into the river. You have those contaminants in the river, so.
So I was thinking that when I think of wetlands and riparian, I think of wildlife, like birds especially, waterfowl especially. Is that, would they be congregating where that water's? That was my, that was-
Yeah, so-
Kind of raised my concern.
And wetlands are more than just like standing water. It's actually, it could be a wet soil where there's wetland vegetation growing, and you have this like, basically inundation of like wet soils and water. Sometimes it's standing water. Sometimes it's just like an area where maybe the ground's soft, and you can tell there's water, and it's developing those soils that are going to break down those contaminants. So wildlife certainly use them. It's very important for wildlife. I don't know that it's not going to be like detrimental to them, I mean, in most conditions. I'm sure you can find some situation where something's so grossly polluted. But with what we're dealing with, just stuff coming off a street and stuff, it's, they live together quite well.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ready?
I think, hope so.
Yes, what's the-
Okay, I'm moving on. Coming back to the- Okay, Carter. Let me move off of the video.
So to be a part of this project, the people helping, you look up on the bank and you're just working. And then you get to go through the city, amount of staff, and just pulling out the river. It's awesome. So excited for the project and the different possibilities that are out there. Continue to just grow this whole thing. It's going to be-
When we first started, in-water riverboats, and now we're close to 20 in-water riverboats. And we've moved-
Ken?
Yeah. I broke it.
I did. Tricks.
It's been great to be a part of this reality, other people helping. You look up on the bank and you see all the work in. And then you get to go forward and see the city staff and just everything that they're pulling out of it. Just so excited for the project, all the different possibilities that are out there. Continue to clean, grow this whole thing. It's going to be great.
When we first started, we had in-water riverboats. And now we have 20 in-water river- We've moved over a million pounds of debris, chores in the water over the past seven years.
One of the things that makes the restoration very unique in the city of Casper, the amount of community involvement that you have. Having been in full projects all over the country, varying size communities from small to large cities, the commitment, the commitment that you have in the city in my career is unparalleled.
Revival is bringing town together to river. It used to be people, "The river." Now we're talking about "our." And I think everyone in town is having-
Thus far, all we have done is taken away, whether that be pollution, species. Now, we're, now we actually get to add to them. And while we're adding a structure, and that's going to be for duration and for our next gen-
The strike on this river, or that we are planning on putting there, will help add up in area and concentrate, close, allow for better oxygen holes behind the structures of J-hooks. J-hooks take water and bring it into the center of the channel and allow bank building on the outside. All of these things are great. They're great for sedimentation. They're great for infertile, trout and other things eat. They're of bringing that back to more of a natural state, given its constraints as we-
Well, it's hard to believe that 10 years has passed since the city council first got behind the idea of the river cleanup and restoration. Extremely exciting to see the progress we've made. And know that in times of financial difficulties, people tend to, there's still a lot of work to be done. It took decades for this to happen. It's going to take more to actually give back to all of our residents.
Yeah, good to be Eli Bebaut, and I'm a lifelong resident. And one of the reasons I choose to live in one, because of the outstanding recreational opportunities afforded here and those to come into the state, that list is the Platte River. As a fly fisherman, I really appreciate the opportunity. Number one on my list, and the ability to be able to increase that habitat. It's always been, it's just been instrumental in doing that resource forward. So I will continue to do that. It's great for Casper. It's great for the state of Wyoming, people who like to fly fish like me. Thank you very much.
So where did we start? Here's 1920. This is what the Platte River looked like over there by Yamako. And the U.S. Health Report said in 1948 that this river was so grossly polluted that it was doubtful that recovery could ever be obtained. By 1958, the refineries were no longer dumping their waste. 1959, we started only primary sewage treatment. It took until 1977, when we started secondary treatment of sewage. Master planning for the trail system started, it was 1981. In 2000, the comprehensive plan said that the North Platte River will emerge as Casper's, a key to Casper's identity. In 2003, the stormwater regulations came out where the city was under the mandate to rate, to watch its stormwater, or then also known as the non-point source pollution. In 2005, the Yamako property remediation was complete. Also, in that same year, the Wyoming Wildlife and Natural Resource Trust was established. In 2006, the city and the Two Fly Foundation founded the North Platte River Restoration. We gathered 39 private companies and 10 governmental agencies to work with us. In 2012, we finished the North Platte River Environmental Master Plan. In 2015, Governor Mead put out his leading, the Charge of the Wyoming Water Strategy, talked about how important water is to Wyoming, mentioned the river restoration as part of it. 2017, the Generation Casper Comprehensive Plan talks about the North Platte River again, how we'll engage. In 2021, the Visit Casper did its Tourism Master Plan that says we need to encourage river remediate, continue the river remediation work. In 2024, the Casper Area Parks and Recreation Plan talks about that we need to finish Wyoming Restoration. So this project is actually many, it does many things for us. It's an infrastructure project. It protects our water treatment plant, our wastewater treatment plant, our roadways. We're going to show you that. It's a drinking water aquifer recharge project, stormwater mitigation, hazard mitigation, especially when it comes to flooding. It's an economic development project. And we can talk about that, and I'll bet that Blake could even talk about that, with the fly fishing that we have going on and the people that are drawn to the river to come here. With tourism being the number two industry in Wyoming, it definitely is an economic development project. It's water pollution mitigation project. It's a health improvement and quality of life project. We know the science is saying more and more, when people are in nature, it changes their well-being and their mental health, and it's conservation project. So this whole project is one big complex project, and we divide it kind of into two parts. One part is the riparian and adjacent uplands area, and we've been working on that since the first volunteer day in 2007. Again, you're coming back to our goal being riparian wow. So what is riparian wow? That is where we have a natural swath of river and riparian running through an urban area that nobody else can have, where we have habitat and urban coming together in such a balance that you can leave the city and go to a riparian area without leaving the city and all the benefits that you can get from that. Riparian areas are 1.2% and wetlands are 2% of Wyoming lands. So think about that. That means we have something, again, very rare here. Yet 90% of Wyoming's wildlife and 70% of Wyoming's birds require a riparian area or a wetland at some point in their life cycle. So again, wetlands do flood attenuation, aquifer recharge, sediment filtering. Sediment is the number one source of water pollution, and they remove contaminants. Volunteer Day has been our hands-on restoration cleanup and rationale of removal, way to make that happen. So then in-river construction, we've hoped to do, have we done 5.95 miles? Or we hope to do 5.95 miles? Seven total miles. Okay. So we have seven priority sites. We have our master plan that was done in 2012. And we started in-river design and construction. We started the design in 2013. And our first project went to construction in 2015, and that was the Marod Park Reach. So Russian olive removal is a very big part of the restoration, especially the riparian and uplands area. We have a $2 million agreement with Wyoming Wildlife and Natural Resource Trust that Casper will eradicate Russian olives from the river corridor, or their words, "There is no use in doing the river restoration project." Part, Russian olive removal is a really big deal. So Wyoming Gamin Fish is working with Colorado and Nebraska for a total landscape project for the region. And our river, our Russian removal project is part of that huge landscape project to remove Russian olives from the North Platte Corridor from the beginning of where the North Platte River starts to the end in Nebraska. Russian olives use up to 75 gallons of water per day per tree, and they are state-designated invasive species. Maintenance or regrowth has to continue for multiple years. And sidebar, this is a picture of Mick McMurray. When we started Volunteer Day in 2007, Mick was the very first volunteer to ever sign up. His registration came across the fax machine. He signed up to do some of the hardest work, which was Russian olive work. And this picture was captured by someone who didn't even know who Mick was. They just liked the fact that this guy was working so hard on the project. So here's a map of where we've removed all of the Russian olives. We've done a lot. It's also a significant ecosystem improvement, and Russian olives rapidly degrade riparian ecosystems. Another fact, Granite Mountain Hotshots, the group that died in that fire in Arizona, they were the ones who removed the Russian olives in that area of the river. That was a year or two before they died. Volunteer Day. We've had 6,500 participants since 2007. It's a National Public Lands Day event, the largest in the country. We have taken out nine mature stands of Russian olives. This is a really big deal. We've taken out some tamarisk, and we've taken out invasive thistles. We wire wrapped over 2,500 trees to protect them from predation. So interestingly, what happens is we take out the Russian olives, and it also clears up the space for beaver and other animals to go in and attack our very precious trees. So we have to go and protect them from being removed. We've taken out 1.3 million pounds of debris out of the river and its banks. And we installed a wetlands protection fence on the Audubon Society land adjacent to Marod Park, and it's working very well. Here's some results from what we've done. I want to point to this picture right here. Do you see the shadow right here? I forget how many dump truck loads, but when we got in there, when we were working on this reach, this is the Wyoming Boulevard Water Treatment Plant Reach, there was a huge hole in regional water, and everybody was unaware that we were about to lose this drinking water well. And so we shored that up and protected that well, river restoration did. We've also have a self-seated cottonwood gallery in that area. That is a really big deal, because they have regenerated themselves. And if you want, we can talk more about that. We've improved water quality. We protected the highway. I'm about to show you that. We've reduced bank erosion, again, sediment being the number one cause of water pollution. We've reduced bank erosion by 821 tons per year into the river so far. We've acquired 102.69 acres of riverfront property, making them publicly owned and accessible. We've filtered stormwaters with, into wetlands, improved fisheries. And public access is a very big deal. We have built two new boat ramps. We have two more to be added. We know that the river is being used by more recreationalists all the time. And our boat ramps, we make a concerted effort to make sure that they're an all-user boat ramp. We want anybody to be able to use the boat ramps. More results. Northern leopard frog is a species of greatest conservation need in Wyoming. We're finding them in abundance, especially in this wetland. This is a monarch butterfly caterpillar that we found on milkweed in the Marod Well Field area. And as you know, monarch butterflies are endangered species. We've increased wetlands in our project areas by 8.81 acres. And that doesn't include when we remove the Russian olives, because when we remove Russian olives, wetlands that were there come back. And then this was a big deal. In 2021, a tourist was here fishing with one of our guides and caught this brown trout right over there in the First Street Reach off First Street Bridge, and we had finished that project in 2020. So seven construction projects went into the master plan. We've done Site 1, which was Marod. Site 2 and 3, we put together, which was Wyoming Boulevard and the Water Treatment Plant, First Street. We have three sites left, Isaac Walton, and then we've combined North Casper and Knife River into one site, and we're about to go into that. Here is the Wyoming Boulevard Reach before construction. You can see there's stormwater outfall. YDOT is doing all kinds of hardscaping, rock, whatever, to hold the bank. That bank was horribly eroding. You see the fence up there. That's the Platte River Parkway Trust pathway. And this is what it looked like. So here is what we did. We moved the river 80 feet to the west. We put in a new riverbank, and this was very good for the river. It was hydraulically good for the river. We saved the road. It was actually less expensive than rebuilding the road that would have washed out. And it was good for everybody concerned. And that was in 2017. In 2020, it looked like this. So the total cost as of 2023, $10.6 million. $2.3 million of that has been property acquisition. Now, the property acquisition has not been just for the river. It's been riverfront property, but it's been for drinking water wells. It's been for landfill pollution that we're doing, et cetera. But that gives you an idea of what we've done. We calculate that. But without the land acquisition, 46% of the funding for this project has come from the state of Wyoming. 30% has come from the city of Casper, or one cent mostly. 8% private, and 6% other government, like Natrona County Recreation Joint Powers Board. Water Smart Grant. Two years ago, Water Smart Grants came out from the Bureau of Reclamation. We wrote two grueling grant requests, and I say grueling, because each grant took three months each of time to write. And that wasn't mostly daytime. That was mostly nighttime and weekend time. We can talk about that. We knew that, we thought we could get them to address the last three reaches. Those three reaches being the most challenging, the most expensive, and critically important to our infrastructure and our ecosystem. We joined with Wyoming Gamin Fish to write them. When we discovered them, we knew that we did not have the expertise to do that. I called and talked to John McCoy's boss and said, "Will Gamin Fish join us in writing these?" They said, "Yes, we think it's important. We fully support this." And they put John McCoy on this with their full staff to help write these grants. And I'm very excited, because they were very successful, and we're talking big money. And what's big money? Well, this is big money to us. So one of those grants was for the Isaac Walton Reach. It's a $4 million project. $3 million of the money for that is coming from a Water Smart Grant. $123,000 is in-kind Russian olive removal. $60,000 came from the Charles E. Pierce Hall chapter of the Isaac Walton League. $250,000 came from the Wyoming Regional Water System, and $569,000 came from the riverfront. This grant had to work in conjunction with the water treatment plant and help improve water and the availability of water in that area, and it will. So we have several, we have several erosion issues, with Chamberlain Road being at risk of collapse. And keep in mind that Chamberlain Road is the only road into Dempsey Acres and into our Marod Water Well Field. And so here's what the bank looks like. Here's another example of what the banks look like over there. Here is our conceptual design that we're working on. We have a meeting on the 18th of September to review the 30% design that we'll be going forward with and construction we're expecting to do in fall of 2026. The other Water Smart Grant was for the North Platte Park Knife River Reach. It is, this is a very tricky grant, very interesting one. The first part of the grant, it's an $872,000 project. And it's for study and to get designed to 60%. Once we get designed to 60% under this grant, we qualify for a $20 million non-competitive construction grant. So if they like our design, if they like, if they feel our studies are good, we will land a $20 million construction grant for a $30 million project. And you say, what are you, how are you going to get the 10 million, the other 10 million? No, it's not coming from the city. We already know that and we already have ideas and plans. And we are pretty confident we can get the other 10 million. The banks in this reach are highly unstable and have extreme erosion. The landfill, the old landfill is polluting the river. The wastewater treatment plant, we have banks eroding over there. That's in danger. And the river, at any point with a high water event in that area, will change course and we will have devastation through that area. At this point, TC Dinkins, because we don't have a design or anything like that, but we have the science behind how the studies that we've done on this section. So I'm asking TC to come up because I don't understand these to kind of explain what these are.
Mayor, Council. Thanks, Sarah, for having us and, you know, taking the time to listen to what we've accomplished today. I've been lucky enough to work on this project since I was, it was 2012, since the beginning. But I've been lucky enough to carry through and continue to work on both the designs and also the study. And this, back in 2023, I did a lessons learned project for the city, kind of taking a real critical look at the previous projects, looking at successes, how we can improve. And also really taking a closer eye at these last two Keystone projects. And what I'm going to talk about here is the Knife River North Platte Park Project because all the other projects, you know, we had bud, construction budgets around $2 million, $3 million, $4 million in general. This one, the size and scope of it is, was much greater than that, which kind of led us to go back to the drawing board to look at different ways of not only understanding what's going on, what are the problems that we can fix, but also how did it get here? The figure you're seeing here came from the lessons learned study. And this is just a look at historical aerials in this area from 1947 on the top right there to 1960 in the bottom, sorry, top left, 1947. Bottom left is 1960, top right 1994. And then the bottom right is 2020. And you kind of see how this river used to be a really braided, messy system. But as development came through and also with all of the reservoirs upstream, essentially all the sediment supply that was being transferred through the system got shut off. So the river kind of started to hold on to some of those relic features of those mid-channel bars and developing vegetation. Unfortunately, a lot of that vegetation is Russian olives. I mean, that section, we were just talking to Randy over there who walked it the other day. I mean, you have to kind of crawl on, on the ground and get underneath some of that stuff. But one of the most critical things that has happened here is the, just to the right of your screen, here, this is where the current Knife River gravel pit is. And back in 1984, I think, the, if you look at where the arrow is pointing, it's pointing to a location where a big river evulsion happened. And so in 1984, there was, they were mining a huge gravel pit right adjacent to that river. A big event came. It blew into that mining pit. Then they just basically reset the banks back further along the river right side, which left the river extremely wide and over widened and just the habitat, degradation of the habitat. And in combination with that, you know, what, we, here's a better example of that, that close up there. If you see that arrow, you can see where in 1994, that's when it evolved between 1960, 1994. And so currently, there's an old relic channel on the left side of that island. And then the other bank is just a ripped, wrapped concrete bank that really has no habitat. And they're trying to alleviate some of the ongoing erosion. And then the water treatment plant just south of where that end is on the north in the bottom, bottom.
Wastewater.
Wastewater Plant. It's, the river gets pitched down right there. And there's kind of a vertical bank right adjacent to the settling ponds. So that the ongoing erosion is now pushing that pressure on the river right towards the wastewater treatment plant. So it's an issue that kind of, it's, in order to accomplish the work that needs to be done, we have to take a bigger look at this. In addition, this little peninsula, this little isthmus of land between the river and that pond is only about 15 feet wide at the top and is sloughing gravel banks on either side. So the next big flow event is likely to breach, could potentially breach that, cut through the pond and reroute itself again, so creating a bigger issue. All the previous projects we've worked on have been generally pretty constrained by infrastructure, drinking wells. You know, so there wasn't a whole lot of opportunity to create massive wetlands or kind of a multi-purpose project. But this project in particular is unique because we've been working with Knife River or been talking with them and also Audubon Society about potentially turning that big pond area into more of a wildlife refuge for waterfowl. And but part of that project would be to increase that floodplain width through there, which would require reclaiming part of that pond. So it's a bigger picture, kind of a multi-discipline project, which thus, you know, why we went after more funds for design and studies. This is another, this is called a relative elevation map, which is essentially a way to visualize the connectivity between the river itself and its adjacent floodplain. So the colors, the red is basically low flow. And as you trend towards the white, the white is about that, well, in this case, it's about seven half feet above the river and blue, you go up to 15. But it kind of shows you some of these relative flow paths that exist, especially up in this upper region. And in part of this study, we did some survey and kind of looked at the riverbed. And ultimately, through this analysis, we found that likely as part of that erosion, because it evolved into that gravel pit and now had a lower baseline, a headcut, which is a river, if you imagine a headcut, a waterfall, it just kind of, it's working its way back upstream. So the riverbed itself lowered and is now even more disconnected from its floodplain. And this river, it headcut, migrated all the way upstream until you get to about right here. And right here, there's like an existing bedrock understructure that is kind of holding that grade. You can kind of see from, this is a longitudinal profile, that we have a really steep riffle right in this zone. So this is really critical for this project. And then the most, the highest rate of bank erosion in this whole reach that we studied is immediately downstream there, right along this left bank. And these banks are about seven, eight feet tall, vertical and just moving 10. They've moved about 10 or 15 feet just since in the last like 10 years we've been looking at it. So all in all, like this, the reason this project, we, you know, went back to the drawing board in terms of funds allocations and going after grants for construction is because in order to accomplish all the goals that we, that river restoration process set out to do, it's really looking more of a wide-scale project. And to address all the instabilities, you know, that's, that's, it, it, it requires looking at the bigger picture. So that's, that's, that's the Knife River Site. I think that's all I have.
That's all you have? We have one last slide. And so we think that the river restoration is a fantastic legacy project for Casper. Not going to tell you it's not hard work because it is. It's expensive. It requires strong leadership and strong collaboration, science-based, tens of millions of dollars that we have been fortunate enough to raise, community support and political will. And Stanford questions, there's, we have a lot of us in the room and I don't think there's a question that we won't be able to answer on the project.
They're going to want to hear from each one of them? Just kidding, everybody. Any questions or comments? Anything in relation to this presentation? Yeah, Pat?
So I noticed Mr. Swanson here. So I wondered if he would like to say something in a particular relationship to FLY that you were instrumental in Mick and Farley and folks putting that together.
Well, Chairman, Commission, in 2006.
To the podium, we have a microphone here. Oh, you're good.
In 2006, the Two Fly was formed. We've raised over $4 million, given it to local charity, mostly children. We've given quite a bit of it to the river, river restoration via the North Platte Foundation, which is an entity that three or four of us control. And the Two Fly has brought a lot of activity to hotels, restaurants, stores downtown. It's brought a lot of money in over and above the $4 million plus. We have a couple of board members here. I'm a past board member now, thank goodness. But it was 17 years that I was, 19 years that I've been. So thank you, Pat. Pat's been to a lot of the Two Fly icebreakers over time and we appreciate the coordination that you have with, with our participants. So enough.
Thank you so much. Any other questions?
I got one. I'm just wondering, since we have all these professionals in the room, if someone can speak to maybe the impact of the presence of wildlife and our blue ribbon trout that this river restoration has made an impact on, or the birds, or, you know, just that whole North Platte Corridor? Any willing to speak on the impact? Zach, do you want to talk about birds after? Yeah? Okay.
What?
Yeah, Han, Wyoming Game and Fish.
Mayor members of the council. Yeah, the North Platte River is what we consider a blue ribbon trout fishery, which we, we rank trout fisheries based off of a color system in Wyoming and blue being the best of the best. So about 1% of the total stream miles in the state of Wyoming are designated as blue ribbon fisheries. So the North Platte River from Gray Reef Dam downstream through Casper is, is blue ribbon water. And as, as you progress further downstream from Gray Reef, back 10, 15 years ago, the habitat gets progressively worse and worse with increasing distance from the dam. And that's due to a lot of things like sediment inputs from bank erosion, warming of the water, habitat degradation due to over widening of the channels, silt accumulation, things like that. What we've seen with the restoration work is that when you bring the, the river back into more of a properly functioning condition, it maintains cleaner substrates of gravel and cobble, which leads to increased invertebrate abundance, which we see better food for the fish on the river, better condition on those fish. And the ultimate goal of, if the river can be cleaned up sufficiently, we could get to a place where we begin to have natural reproduction of trout through the Casper area. Right now, we get natural reproduction upstream from Gray Reef Dam down roughly to Government Bridge area, Highway 220. And then when you get below that, largely due to sediment in the river, we lose more and more successful spawning to the point where once you get to about Robertson Road, there's really no natural reproduction anymore. So one of our goals, at Game and Fish as a, as population managers, is to see increased trout reproduction through town. That's really good for the resource. It saves us a lot of money from stocking. Right now, we do stock fish in the lower end of the river. So anything we can do to, to boost the population. Another important part about having natural reproduction in a river is what the fish can produce, we can't even begin to match through stocking. So a really good, successful reproduction here, you know, is, it would be nothing for the trout to produce three or four million young trout out of one good year. And based off the hatchery limitations and things like that, you know, we're looking at stocking 30,000 to 40,000 currently. So we can sustain a lot more fish with better habitat and they'll largely take care of themselves.
Thank you so much.
I just want to point out that along with that too, there's a lot of like economic benefits that came with it too, that come with it because of tourism, right? And so it's really affected by that, which makes it more beautiful.
So Zach Hutchison from Audubon Rockies can quickly answer the bird question that we have about what we're seeing with birds.
Mayor, Council. You know, 50 years ago, on the Platte River, you would not have found an osprey. Not just because there weren't nesting platforms, because they'll find anywhere to nest. If you've ever seen a power pole with an osprey nest on it, you know that. But because there wasn't a food population to support such a large group of specifically fish eating predators. Same for bald eagles. We now have three nesting pairs of bald eagles from Robertson Road to NSK Wilkins. And that's three nesting pairs of bald eagles in a highly, you know, disturbed area as far as human activity goes, which is a good sign of, of river health. And 50 years ago, I think you would have been lucky to find a bald eagle nest anywhere around Casper. And so I think it speaks to the improvement in that amount of time. Will there ever be more? Well, that's more of a carrying capacity problem than anything else because we have, we have the river and we have the food now to support such a robust population. And then as far as the economic value of birding goes, for those that don't know, bird watching is one of the largest hobbies in North America. 96 million at US Fish and Wildlife's last study, which was 2024, 96 million bird watchers. If you read the YO File article that came out a few weeks ago, Wyoming has seen a recent spat of what we consider rare birds to the state. They're first timers essentially. They've never been documented in the state before. And three of them have been in Casper. And the first two drew in 50 out of state bird watchers. And then the most recent one drew in over 100 people. Now, that one wasn't in Casper proper. That was at Golden Eye Reservoir, which is about 20 miles west of Casper. But Casper still saw the benefit from that. The other one was at Fort Casper in the Isaac Walton Reach, which hopefully sees some improvements in the future.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Amber?
Question, but if you.
Do we want to? Yeah.
Somebody else? Go ahead.
Ask your question?
Well, it's changing the subject a bit, so if we want to wrap this up, we can.
Blake said, Mayor, Council. Blake said, if you want to speak economics, you know, Blake runs Ugly Bug, Crazy Rainbow.
Sure.
And makes, and he said, if you want, we'd love to talk about that too.
Yeah, absolutely. We'd love it.
Thank you very much. Yeah, it, the river's a huge economic benefit. So roughly, I would guess there's about 200 full-time, 200 people that make their full-time living off of this river now. And it touches kind of all reaches. Simple math, I would guess there's about 5,000 guided trips that come down North Platte. Numbers we've been able to gather from our customers is each angler spends about $500 a day. So if you take 10,000, probably 10,000 anglers a year, $500 a day. At about 62% of them, non-residents to the state of Wyoming, they're bringing money from outside, spending it here in our restaurants, hotels, airfare, that sort of stuff. So yeah, there's, there's obviously a fishing guide community. There's a retail community. Many of my downtown retail partners benefit from fishing because we spend money, they spend money kind of all over the place. So yeah, it's, it's a huge benefit. I also, I don't know that we could ever gather the numbers, but I would be very interested as to the retail value of a healthy river and what it's done to real estate values of homes on the water. I think we've all kind of experienced here in Casper for years. People want to live on the mountain, base of the mountain. We're now seeing more and more construction. People really enjoying the river and what it has to offer. So a very big economic benefit, we see.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Amber?
Jolene, we're coming around, you know, to seeing the light at the end of the tunnel on seven identified areas. Once we have those done, what does it look like to protect the longevity of the work that was done and maintain it? And what's sort of the long-term trajectory for this project?
Russian olive is going to be one of them that's big that we have to go in. And a lot of that's handwork. And when we can get it early with seedling.
And a lot of that's handwork, and when we can get it early with seedlings, it takes hardly any time at all. And I'm going to look to see if there are anybody who wants to take this on more than me, because there will be some things that we have to do to sustain it. We are working very hard in our designs to make sure that they're self-sustaining, but Russian olive will be big, for one. You're going to catch me on other... TC, John? I said, going into this, there wouldn't be a question that we wouldn't answer today.
You did promise.
Remember.
Jolene, maybe stuff about, go ahead, Randy, and then I'll talk about Russian olive and the maintenance there.
Yeah, I was going to talk real quick, but you're welcome to take it to Brian.
Randy Walsh with Tetra Tech.
Mayor, Council. I've been proud to be a part of this project from, I guess, 2012 as well. I was the project manager for Marad Park Wyoming Boulevard Water Treatment Plan. Actually, working on Isaac Walton right now. It is a great question. It is impossible to envision long-term protection of these projects without some degree of maintenance. Russian olive is literally a thorny tree and a bit of a thorny issue. If you look at the sheer number of Russian olive that we have at Marad Park, you can understand that it's going to be a long-term issue. Parts of our grants hinge on the fact that we hope to eradicate them. But eradication is a strong word. And Jolene is right. Getting them young, it's pretty easy. As we move downstream and we look at North Casper and Knife River, a lot of that $20 million construction ramp is going to be involved in vegetation, because those reaches are loaded with Russian olive and a host of invasive species. That will be a fascinating one to work on. But even Wyoming Boulevard or Isaac Walton Reach right now, that has some design considerations because of the Russian olive that are there and where they are growing. To a degree, there's going to need to be maintenance. Russian olives themselves, if you're familiar with them, they're bird dispersed. They're also water dispersed. They flip. They're always going to be coming in to the reaches in the city of Casper. And there will be maintenance that's involved. Hopefully, that will decline through time, but it's going to be a continuing management issue. So, to the degree that we can plan for that and know that, I think it's crucial that when we design and construct these projects, that we do our due diligence, that we treat, that we remove, that we do the best that we can, understanding that it's never going to be a permanent solution, but that we can hope to make great strides in a short amount of time and then have some additional maintenance.
Brian, do you want to add to that?
Council, I'm Brian Conley, and I did about 23 years with Nettona County Weed and Pest. And I can confidently say I've controlled more Russian olives than anybody in this room. Horrible tree. But, as Randy mentioned, it does get easier with time. So, initial control means removing, cutting, cut-stump method, several different methods of removing that big mature tree. Then you have a re-sprout phase, where those trees that you didn't get all the root, or it didn't take the cut-stump treatment sufficiently, you get re-sprouts from that. That takes a little time. But then, once you get to where you're just having seedling growth, the importations of seed by raccoons, deer, birds, et cetera, that's quite easy. And we have seen great successes even in our volunteer days where over on the city well field, we've got ROTC kids, and they're only there for four hours, right, on volunteer day. And we've cleaned up large sections of that river left in the well field, just with hand tools. It is hard work, and it does take a bit of time, but it's absolutely doable. And it's not even big-money stuff, right? Maybe excavator for the big trees, but everything else is pickaxe and sweat equity. So, absolutely doable. And so, the maintenance for Russian olive is something that has happened at Marad Park, for example. Marad Park has two Russian olive trees, and their days are numbered. And we initially removed thousands of trees out of Russian olive, out of Marad Park. So, it's doable.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks. Appreciate everyone for being here and everyone for speaking. I wish I had more really good questions to really tap into the knowledge and expertise here. But as somebody who is an avid user of the river, not fishing so much, but I try to get my kayak out at least once a week during the summer months, and love the river, so really appreciative of all the work that's been done the past couple decades. Makes me ashamed how we used to treat it 40, 50 years ago. My question is, we haven't mentioned Platte River Revival Day, I take it? Is it Saturday, 27th this year?
Yes, Saturday, September 27th.
Perfect. So, would encourage anyone listening or in the room, sounds like I'm preaching to the choir for these folks, but would encourage folks to sign up and show up that day. However, that is just one day out of the year. And so, I was curious, especially in the way of Russian olive removal, I, like Mick, love to get my hands dirty, would love to go spend a Saturday morning ripping roots. How do we create more opportunities for people if they can't make it on the 27th? What is it we can do to help facilitate that sweat equity? You know, I serve in the Rotary Club of Casper with your husband, Jolene, and would love to see a couple Rotary Service Days ripping out Russian olives or something. So, how can we facilitate that, I wonder?
We'll take you up on that.
Perfect.
Now, need to be clear on when it's most effective. So, Russian olive removal is most effective when the leaves start turning, when the cottonwoods start turning yellow till about early December. So, it's a very, very short window of when you can be removing them to be most effective. If we do it at any other time of the year, it's, we can do it, it's not as effective as we like it to be. So, to be able to not have to keep going back, going back. So, timing of year would be one, and we would be happy to get more days. It's just a matter of coordination, and coordinating volunteer days, we need to make sure we have people confirmed for it, because sometimes it's hurting a lot of different interests and no-shows, and we're, but we're always happy to do it.
Thank you. Go ahead, follow-up if I could. I know a lot of the land is public. My guess is a lot of this land is private as well. What conversations or agreements or other things have we had with the private landowners along the river? Do they let volunteers come on and rip Russian olives? I mean, what do those relationships look like?
Yes. We've had wonderful relationships everywhere that we've gone so far. We've worked with private landowners, and yes, they allow volunteers to come on. There are certain places we can only do cut-treat. We have it down, believe it as a science. We even have a whole study on Russian olive removal and what's effective and love. So, yes, we do get that. The other part of invasive species that we have been very fortunate to handle is in the well fields. We've been doing Scotch thistle, and that's late May, early June. And so far, the Fort Casper well field, we have it completely clean at this point. Where's wood? Some green wood. And we are working, we'll be working on the Rodwell Field. We did some more up in North Casper Park this, in June, with the Wyoming Outdoor Council. So, we're dealing with two times of the year, June, late May, early June, and then September, October, and early November, or November, for Russian olives.
Thank you. Chat about Rotary stuff.
Okay.
So, I think, I've only been on council a short time, but it seems to me over the years and even currently, the fifth scent utilizing some of those funds on the trail, in particular pedestrian bridges. Currently looking at a joint pedestrian plus moving utilities. Do you, is it not believed that the trail system is of great value to the river restoration and to our city? I think it is.
Oh, it absolutely is of great value. The trail system that we have in Casper is unequaled, and Wyott talks about it. And frankly, the whole river project, if you will, stands on the shoulders of council and those advocates coming forward, starting to embrace the river. Everybody started turning toward the river when we started doing trail. So, it's very much a terrific asset that we have going. Yes. I'm sorry, Mayor, Counselor, I didn't...
Any other questions? Thank you guys so much. Go ahead, Pat.
One last one. So, Tom, who was originally on the Two Fly setting that up? I left John Martin guessing John was part of that.
Mayor, Council. Originally, the Wolf family. And John Martin and Mick McMurray were big supporters of it to start. They weren't the worker bees, but they were the honey.
And yourself and Bill Farley?
And Farley was a big supporter as well, and we formed it, there were three or four of us that formed it in '06. So, yeah, it's been a remarkable run for everybody. Thanks to new board members. It'll continue for much longer.
And I just point that out, because really, they've brought so much to the table through Two Fly. You know, whether it's Calaberton down at the Jonah Bank location, doing the steak fry, which I've never been able to go to. But, you know, it brings a remarkable cast of characters from, quite honestly, not only the country you're around.
Well, thanks for those good words. The Two Fly was formed, like I said, in 2006, but it's limited to oil and gas people in the Rockies. We get people from North Dakota, we've had people from North Dakota, California, Texas, Oklahoma, Colorado, Wyoming, Pennsylvania, and Calgary. But they give a lot of money. It's because they're generous people, so, including the McMurrays and the... And they continue, and Martin continues. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jolene, for everything, and we appreciate it. Thank you for everybody for being here and your expertise and your work that you're doing for, that you're valued asset to our community. It's something that I grew up with, spent a lot of time on, continue to spend time on. So, thank you, everybody. If you all want to just stay around for the rest of the meeting, it's going to be exciting. Go ahead, we'll take a real quick short recess so everybody can, who does not want to stay. Thank you. That's right. Good to see you again. Good to see you. Appreciate it. Zalima, thank you.
How are you doing? Likewise. All good, yourself?
Good.
Good. What's that?
Those kids.
One of your kids?
Well, my oldest is 23, 22, 21.
Thank you, Mayor. So, recently, the city of Casper, with council's approval, did advertise to bid two city-owned properties for potential disposal and sale. The first property, Mesa, is located in the vicinity of Jordan Drive and Central Drive, you know, on the western side of town. And then the Stone Ridge property is a property on the south along Stone Ridge and in the vicinity of Vista Way, just south of Wyoming Boulevard. And so, I had the occasion with Liz Becker to open bids for the first time as interim city manager very recently, and city staff has vetted those bids. And now we come to you for consideration of your determination whether or not you want to accept those bids and sell those properties or not. And so, I would invite Liz Becker and her team up to, or just Liz Becker, up to review the bids with you and talk through any questions that you may have.
Call Liz.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. Yeah, the Mesa land, we want to have four acres of Russian olive trees. So, I wanted to... Just to see if you're... Now, we, as Zalima indicated, you know, we had first come to you in July with these two properties. We had recently had the transaction on the property at Trevitt... We had recently had the transaction on the property at Trevitt Robertson and also on Locust. And so these were the next two parcels that we had brought forward. We got wonderful media coverage, and that is included in the packet, about the intent to sell this public property. And a lot of interest was actually expressed. I had a lot of inquiries, and a lot of RFPs were sent out with the details. But in the end, we had one submittal, as you all saw in the packet, for the Mesa property. And then we had two on the Stone Ridge property. And so tonight, what staff is asking for is some direction, if there is interest among the counselors, to again bring these forward to the formal acceptance at the, at the next council, full regular council meeting. With the Mesa property, we'll hit that one first. As you all saw, the appraisal on those 4.3 acres came in right at $300,000. We have tried previously to sell that property, as we have with other property, i.e. Trevitt Robertson Road. With Mesa, the issue with that property has been, again, the lack of infrastructure upgrades to that area to date. And again, the applicant that did submit has noted that, that there will be need to put in roads as well as the utilities, which would be right there at the junction of Jordan and Central that would go into that 4.3 acres. Staff went out, really walked and spent some current time out there before we even had brought it forward to you all the first time, to just look at how that site fits with our comprehensive lands use plan, and really how that area is kind of zoned currently with the development around that area. Definitely an area for housing. Wyoming Housing Network has proposed that they would like to spend $150,000 to purchase, knowing that they have the road and the utilities to put into that property. They are looking, as you all saw in the proposal, at about 40 units. They are looking more at independent homes, single-family homes, not multifamily in that area. Now, with multifamily, we have a development to the south of this site right now that is also an affordable apartment complex, very well managed. And this would be really the, the opportunity to move into an affordable, single-family home as individuals are getting, you know, their life under them, and be able to move, again, from a multifamily into their own home. And Housing Network has indicated, and I know that if Melissa were here or even this next week, they are looking at trying to phase this development in, possibly do some tiny homes, along with, again, more of a development with potentially some patio homes, but to really make the four acres kind of a mix of affordable housing styles. And so that if someone wanted a, you know, more of a tiny home concept initially, and maybe it's a first-time home buyer, maybe it's a young person, they could start in kind of a smaller footprint and then be able to move upward into more of an affordable that's a little bit bigger in size. Housing Network shared with you their history on the developments that they have done here in Casper, very similar to what we've seen with the Casper Housing Network, Casper Housing Authority, pardon me. The Wyoming Housing Network does also have a nice resume of housing projects. And so that was the one proposal. And again, we have, you have, in the past, you have with Liberty Square on Beverly Street, sold that property, which was the old Ballfield property, for less than appraised value for affordable housing. And that development also went up there, 60 units that opened a couple of years ago. So this is a little bit of a different concept, but again, it is for affordable housing, again, meeting one of your council goals, for the livability and quality of life, as well as the needs assessment for housing. So staff is supporting, has added support for this one. So I'd be happy to answer any questions on the first one before we move to the second property.
Yeah, go ahead.
So how, how on earth did the City of Casper end up with this parcel?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I wish Jolene's group that can answer any question was here. Most, oh boy. I believe we were gifted that, darn it all, Counselor, I don't know.
Be a park?
There was parkland, yes, that had been deeded, and then we had it rezoned a few years ago to the commercial, pardon me, to the residential area. But I don't know, remember, who gifted it to us as parkland, because we had a lot of landowners out there that didn't want it for their own development. And so gifted it, got a little bit of a break. But I would really need to go back into some annals, if you need a history, to see if you really wanted to know who gifted it to us as parkland.
Yeah. Go ahead, Pat.
So Mayor, I'm curious, when something is, not that I believe we need any more parks, but especially that area, it makes no sense. But anyway, legally, how does that work? We can do anything we want? Or a lot of times, these deed restrictions?
Yeah. Mayor, Counselor, that's a great question. So if land is designated as public park space, or as a statutory mechanism by which, if for a certain period of time it is not utilized as a park, then the city can go ahead and change the use. Not familiar with the history on this particular parcel, but it sounds like that was done not too long in the distant past. Also, not having looked at any deeds in the chain of title, I can't speak specifically to deed restrictions. But my gut would tell me is that if the city went ahead and rezoned it here, and the recent pass away from parks, that there would not have been any deed restrictions that would prohibit the city from, from changing the use. So, so yeah, it's a well-defined process. To my knowledge, this has not been ever developed or utilized as parkland, so that would allow the city to dispose of it or utilize it for whatever public purposes the city deemed appropriate.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead, Pat.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Liz, for the information. I'm really interested in the concept of tiny homes and stuff. I think I've spoken about that. The fact that, you know, I would love to see developers get a little more open-minded and creative in some of their strategies to addressing our housing needs here in the city. In regards to the concept of quote-unquote affordable housing, though, could you clarify for me, and I apologize if it's on the memo, is this housing intended to be like voucher-based or, you know, subsidized housing? Or is it just, is affordable used more so in a loose term, just cheaper than the average?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, at this point, we do not anticipate it's going to be voucher-based.
Okay.
So affordable in the term.
You did say, so serve households earning less than 80% of the area immediate income is their target, right? They're not needing the vouchers.
There could be some VASH vouchers down the road, potentially, if they partner with Housing Authority on some of those. So I don't want to be held to no vouchers, but the idea is the affordability factor, they've already been working with a developer. On the idea to keep these prices, what you and I would think of as affordable, under the $100,000 price tag, so, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you. All good information. Thank you. I mean, I like the, I like the plan. My issue is, and we've kind of had this come up multiple times throughout my tenure on council, is I wonder why if, you know, the appraisal assessment, I guess, is included in here, and it's all this, you know, evidence supporting the nature of the appraisal and all of these factors, but yet our highest bid is about half of what the appraised value is. And so I guess my question is, why, why does it seem like we can't get bids for appraised value of this, or Trevitt Robertson, or any other of the land? I don't think we've gotten a bid for a piece of land at the appraised value. I think like, I don't remember a single example of it. So I'm just curious why, why that seems to be such a struggle.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, when we first brought this up, Carter had had me go back and look at a recap of city properties sold for less than appraised value. And I've already shared the one with you on Beverly. But we went back to Bernadine, over between south of the Field of Dreams Girls Club. We sold that, you sold that in 2017 at appraised for $145,000. It sold for $80,000, and it's used by, for storage by the adjacent business. But the idea was putting this property into private hands and not needing to maintain it with the cost of mowing or irrigation recently that you saw with Locust. Wolf Creek Cemetery has come up recently, again, appraised for $345,000. We sold it for $286 in 2017. Fire Station Number Six, way out on Valley Drive, it appraised for $230,000, and it sold also in June of 17 for $182,000. The Semmerman had purchased that for the storage of private vehicles. So again, there was the desire to put it, again, into private hands on that particular fire station after the new one was completed. Then again, former Plains Furniture was also on my list, how it appraised for $1,004,000, and we sold it in 2019 for $500,000. Again, with the plans for the economic development that the, the current businesses have added to the community. So we have seen it, and there is not a defined reason. We do.
Thank you, Eric, Counselor.
Yeah. Mayor, Counselor, so I think that that's a valid question, and I've got kind of a two-part answer. Having dealt with appraisals throughout my legal career, I would say that oftentimes appraisals are more art than science. And so to really answer your question, I think we would have to dig into every appraisal that we've done and say, you know, why is this different than, than what we're selling it for? Because it really hinges upon what are your comparables, the market conditions. But, you know, kind of a glib answer is that really fair market value is what a willing buyer at an arm's length transaction is willing to pay. And so, so that's, that's hard to pin down. What I would say from a strictly legal standpoint is Wyoming statute 151112, you know, does not prohibit the city from selling parcels below that appraised value. In fact, when we go out to bid, we typically get an appraisal, but it's not a legal requirement. It's only a legal requirement when we're doing it without a competitive bidding process. But I think it's good practice, and that's why the city is, is engaged in that. There is an old case from 1937, which is very similar to the situation we have here, where the City of Cheyenne entered into some transactions to sell property to construct housing for the new airport. And it was challenged because it was less than the fair market value or appraised value at the time. And what the Wyoming Supreme Court said is that as, as an elected body, you can take into consideration non-economic factors as part of that consideration. So, yes, could you get more, potentially, if you marketed it more aggressively from front dollars and cents standpoint, possibly. But it's fair for the council to say, you know, we have a need in the community, and so we're going to sell it slightly below or at a price below the appraisal because of these other intangible benefits. I think, to Ms. Becker's point, there's a history of the city doing that in various situations. So, so just to be clear, I don't know that there's any legal impediment. It's purely a, a policy decision on the part of council, I think, at this point.
Amber.
Thank you. I had, you know, the same thought occurred to me, I think, just because we've seen a few of them lately that are all hovering around that, like, kind of 50% mark in recent, in recent times, and the justification in several of these cases was utilities, roads. And so I was trying to understand, like, do, do appraisals not sort of take that into account when they, when they appraise a piece of property? But I think in this case, for, for me, I certainly feel much better about that scenario when it's addressing a need like this one, which I think is really significant. So I don't personally have a lot of heartburn in this particular case with that coming in below value also. It was donated to us, so we didn't have an investment in the property in the first place outside of having to maintain it for all these years. But I did want to draw attention to that this is, at least the proposal here, for permanent supportive housing, which typically comes with a host of, like, wraparound services and other things to help make sure people stay housed, and that people, you know, are positioned in their lives in a stable enough way that they can, that they can get themselves into a place where they, they can maintain housing, which I think is, has been an urgent identified gap in the homelessness issue that, and so I can see that they're working here with the Toronto Collective Health Trust. So seems to me to be, you know, a little bit more than just even affordable housing. It's got that added intention to partner with some, some other entities in town to provide additional resources, which to me makes it even a more attractive project in this case. So, yeah, it seemed, this one seems really good to me, I think.
Anything else specific to this one?
Mr. Mayor, did you want to decide on this one?
Yes, I was going to say, we can just go through systematically to see where everybody's at. So the bid for the Wyoming Housing Network, is everybody okay with that?
Meaning, with our approval, it'll be on our next regular work meeting?
Correct.
Agenda for final?
Final approval. So, yeah, so to move it forward to that.
So if you've got thoughts, come speak in public comments, 6:00 PM next week?
Yep. Thanks, everyone. Okay, next one.
Next parcel was part of the Stone Ridge addition, and again, it was initially in the site plan designated as parkland. That also has previously was vacated in accordance with statute and is now again zoned R2, one-unit residential. And so again, we put this one out, have quite a bit of interest, inquiries into the city department. At the end, we ended up with the two bids. I think you all have read through those. One of the bids was at $150,000 by Caliber Construction, again, wanting to build a personal residence. And the other bid came in at $102,501 by the Ewing and Humans team. And again, they did not provide a proposed use in their, their reply. They did submit some other components related to their offer. What is important to note, again, in both of those bid submittals, is again, the lack of utilities currently at that site. We are in a residential neighborhood, but I know that has come up internally in our executive team meetings also by our Public Services Department, that there will be the need to do utility upgrades to that site. Again, was not serviced. So we've got the sewer, sanitary sewer, as well as water for certain that needs to go there. So there is a cost that will be incurred by whomever would end up with this property. So the two bids did note, did note that that was a consideration in their proposal to have less than appraised value. It's again, once again, the infrastructure upgrades to that property to make it residential use.
Questions? Yep, go ahead, Pat.
So you've already answered the, the park situation, but, so I was curious, number one, if the high bid currently resides in that area, or, or is he, they're, they're just basically wanting it for their own home site?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, we did not get, excuse me, into that level of detail with that applicant, but that's kind of how Craig and I had read it.
Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Pat.
So, to me, I don't know if the other bidder, I noticed they were willing to also, the other low bidder was willing to pay closing costs, title insurance, and some of those things that I'm guessing the other might, might have paid for, maybe the high bidder, but I just wondered if those costs were factored into the bid, you know, or it was just the straight $102,000.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, we did not have a conversation on the closing costs specifically. I, I did see it was noted in the second bid, but we, we open them, and then we bring them forward to you all. And then if we have questions, you can also go back and do research or have a proposal, separate proposals done in regular session. done in regular session. If ever you would like, I don't know if the city attorney has anything to add. I mean, we opened the bid, and that's as far as we go, and then it's up to you all to direct us.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilors, I don't have much to add. I think that is correct. By statute, council has the ability to accept the highest responsible bid. If based on the two bids, council is uncomfortable, they can all be rejected. That is certainly your pleasure at this point. Statute is very clear that what constitutes a responsible bidder or bid is really up to determination by council.
Zulima, did you have a point to join?
I did, Mayor, thank you. I do want to make one point of clarification. So there is currently water and sewer service to the lot as it is today. All of the proposals indicated that if you were to split the lot into two, then water and sewer service would have to be run to the second part of the lot. And so I think in the first proposal by Caliber Construction, Jared Rude, he indicated that it would be a high expense to split the lot. And so I think the proposal is to just build a single residence on the lot in its entirety. You notice in the other bid, they noted the construction cost to add utilities, but specifically it would be if the lot was split and the second lot was used for residential construction. So I just wanted to make that point of clarification.
Without seeing, I just wanted to, sorry.
No, go ahead.
So too, like the part of that lot without seeing it correctly, but it does make reference that it's a ravine. It's sloped in thirty-eight thousand acres of that, or square footage, sorry. It's sloped in the ravine and unusable. So again, to try to get, split it and to be able to get infrastructure in there would be almost, if you're not going to use it, why would you split it, right?
Pat, do you have anything else? I think I should. Yeah, go ahead.
I would just ask on this one, that I think the simplest would be to reject both bids. And I would rather, personally, I don't know what the intention on the low bidder is on the use, but I mean, you can see on the detail where it slopes off pretty rapidly back there. I was gonna try to drive by it, but didn't get it done. But, and I guess I would more favor also if one of the bidders, it's just like that small parcel we sold a few weeks ago for, I think it was fifteen thousand, that made total sense, you know, for the neighbor adjoining property to have because of its size. This is different, I respect that. Because you could build a single residence, but so that's kind of my feeling, and plus I don't know exactly where Warren lives, but I think he's in that neighborhood.
So during the work session, we don't have comment?
I was just willing to answer some of the questions about the data that was from me. They hadn't corrected.
I'm gonna look at our attorney, because I know this is in a bid, and so I don't know if this would be fair in this case.
Yeah.
And I'll look at councils for discretion here.
Right. Mayor, Councilor, you're correct. Typically, we don't take questions at a work session. There could be an element of unfairness if one side is able to engage with council to answer questions or not. So.
I totally agree.
Yeah, I don't think I can have yet.
And that's fair. I just wanted to make certain that you guys had the opportunity to.
Appreciate it, Warren. Thank you.
I can clarify a lot of those questions that you had.
Thank you. Yeah.
I mean, do we want to just ask staff to follow up with both bidders to get more information rather than just outright rejecting everything?
That's probably a pretty pragmatic approach.
We don't have to redo this.
Before we reject tonight, without knowing everything, we could have staff reach out to both bidders to find out more specifics. Is that something we can do? Is council okay with that? Yeah, you're okay. So we'll put that on hold. I'll have staff reach out to the bidders to find out a little bit more clarification.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I do have one other question. I keep the, I'm under the impression that that Stone Ridge property, was that at one time, was that also designated as potential park property? And maybe you said it, I missed it, but so what's the rationale for now it not being a park? Is that?
It's not a park, it's just a lot right now.
Oh, but I mean, wasn't it, originally it was intended to be a park. So why did that change?
Zulima, so she can.
Mayor, Councilor, so this has been undeveloped park land for, I think nearly two decades since the development actually went in. And so we felt in parks that we didn't have the resources to construct a new park in the community, and certainly not the staff resources and ongoing financial, you know, ability to maintain another new park. And so when certain individuals expressed interest in that lot, you know, we went through the exercise of determining if that made good sense. And the Parks and Rec Master Plan that was recently completed, you know, the consultants indicated that while it is slightly underserved, there are parks within a reasonable distance. And so that also helped us to determine that the highest and best use of the property maybe you don't want it in private hands.
Thank you. I appreciate that refresher.
This is rejecting my question before hearing it, but we've seen little parcels come up quite often from time to time. Is that a relic of different development philosophy from the past, zoning philosophy from the past? Like, how did this sort of, these parcels come to be?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it has been deliberate on staff's part. And as you heard from Ms. Lopez, the Parks Plan has revealed some parcels prior to that. The city planning department has also been looking at parcels out there that need to be put into public use. So we have been challenged over the years to just look at little nuggets that are out there.
Let me rephrase my question. How did we get these nuggets? Like, was that a relic of a philosophy where like, hey, we might want to park in this neighborhood in here, and here, and here, and here? Was that just a different philosophy at the time?
I think it was a requirement.
Yeah, it is a P U D requirement or something like that.
It is, and in our site plans, it is a requirement. And we've had some parcels, again, in all areas of town, one over even on the east side, the Pratt subdivision that we had dealt with a few years ago. But yes, they are part of a site plan, and then if a park is built somewhere else close, then we are left with that opportunity to put it into different use.
So when we say these were donated to the city, is that oftentimes would have been the developer kind of was required to allocate something for park and then gave it? So it's not like a charitable donation necessarily, like I desperately as an individual gave you this land because I want you to create a park here. It's more of a red tape bureaucratic requirement that then we end up with these parcels.
Mr. Mayor, Council, that is the majority of them.
Yeah.
We have had individuals donate property also.
Sure.
That we have dealt with in years past, too. So a little bit of both, but the majority is in fact a red tape bureaucratic requirement.
Sorry, I don't mean to characterize what you do that way, but you know what I mean.
No, we do have that requirement, and we all live in neighborhoods, and that is something that we would all like to see is the parks. And again, I think we do a great job of developing those, servicing those, but then, yeah, there's the maintenance factor that again, the Parks Plan laid out very well on many parks in Kansas. Excellent. Glad I took the question.
See?
Any other surprise questions from Liz? Like Amber, just, thanks, Liz. All right, let's go ahead and move on to Slip. Sorry, let me just really quickly, sorry. So the direction from council is, is we'll have staff reach out to the two bidders to find out more clarification. Everybody's good with that? Okay, sorry, Zulima.
Mayor, can I just get some clarification, though, on the specific questions that you want answered? Because I'm not sure that I was very clear. It sounded like you were interested in understanding what the land use would be for the Humans bid, is that correct? Were there other pieces of information that we were able to understand better?
Yeah, I think there was a little more detail in the low bid about closing costs and timeline of when we close. And so just to make sure we're comparing apples to apples there with the two prices, I think would be helpful.
Any other things that you can think of that we might have, we just might want to make sure? Is that enough clarification?
Yes, thank you.
Pat, did you want to?
No, I think that was basically in, so that we are comparing apples to apples, and then it'll have the council to try to figure out, put it back out to bid, or if that answers the questions, or.
We'll be doing that, Warren. We'll be reaching out for more clarification. So at that time, you can be able to open that up. Thanks, Warren. Appreciate it. Thanks, appreciate it. Okay, let's move along now. Slip.
Thank you, Mayor. So each year, our city, but certainly our utility team, puts together a five-year capital plan based on the highest need in the utility system. In this case, we're discussing water. And so a plan was developed and priorities were identified for fiscal year twenty-six, which of course we are in now. Unfortunately, however, the funding that we have available for the slate of projects that we want to complete will not be adequate, and we know that. And so we are seeking council's permission to apply for a grant. And so with that sort of brief introduction, I would like to invite Ethan Yonker up to give you a little bit more detail about the projects that he'd like to complete as well as the grant that he would like to apply for.
Come on up, Ethan.
Mayor and council, this is, as Ms. Lopez mentioned, is the fiscal year twenty-six priority water mains replacement, priority water main replacement project. It has four different sections of main line included in it. Poplar Street from twenty-fifth to twenty-ninth, twenty-ninth Street from Poplar to Kaufman, Yellowstone from Wilson to Lowell, and Jim Bridger Drive from De Smith to Bel Air. These water lines, there's a lot of data that we have available to help us prioritize what mains need to be replaced in our system, things like age of the pipe, material of the pipe. One of the main indicators that a pipe has reached its service life is how frequently it has broken. Between these four sections of pipe, we have seen twenty-nine water main breaks between those four sections. They are ductile iron and cast iron pipes. I couldn't tell you exactly which section is which, but all of those pipes are metal pipes that do corrode over time and need to be replaced. Thankfully, the state land investment board has the mineral royalty grant opportunity for us to apply for grant funds to help us complete all of these sections of pipe. I guess that I would mention that the water distribution team does a very good job of keeping track of the data and helping us determine which water mains are priorities for us over here.
Any questions for Ethan? I'll lead into this. Grant. Is everybody comfortable with the city applying for this?
I'll stick to your time.
Thanks, Ethan. Okay, appointment to the Board of Appeals for Dangerous Buildings.
Thank you, Mayor. So we find ourselves in a position where historically we have had a board of appeals concerning the abatement of dangerous buildings that certain counselors sat on. Now we are in a position where the board comprised of a couple of members of council that are no longer with us, and so we are needing to fill those vacancies.
No longer on council.
Yeah, they're still alive.
Well, no longer. Thank you. No longer on.
How much maintenance do you intend to give that several times?
I will pass on the appointment, thank you. Is that dangerous?
Yeah. True, they are dangerous buildings. Excuse me, no longer on city council. And so we need to fill those vacancies with current members of the city council. And so we ask for your consideration, and certainly Liz is here to answer any questions that you may have about the time commitment or anything related to that particular Board of Appeals.
So we did talk a little bit about this in leadership, and Steve Cathy, former members of the council that are still living and breathing, Cathy and Inka Brettson are obviously no longer on the council, so they were on that. Brandy still sits on that, so you're.
The breathing tail?
You're still still. And so we were looking for an additional two, so I kind of would want to throw that out there, and if, you know, Liz, if you want to put into context, maybe so would be enticing if you're like, well, this is a very intensive board, or maybe it's not.
Mayor, to save Liz the trip, I can answer that.
Oh, perfect, that'd be fantastic.
Counselor, so part of the reason why this is flown under the radar is it only meets as needed, and I think we've convened twice in almost three years that I've been at the city. Prior to that, I think it had been years since it had convened. We do have one potential matter that needs to come before the board, so that's what's prompted this. But I would say that overall, the time commitment is fairly minimal. Unless we get super proactive and start declaring tons of buildings and get lots of appeals, I don't see that it would be a very onerous time commitment. Even the matter that we think is on the horizon, I think would be relatively, relatively small time commitment. So happy to answer any questions.
So if anybody's interested in that, I don't want to point to anybody. Yeah, Matt's interested, one more? Anybody?
I'm also interested, if nobody else is.
Perfect. Then we'll do that, and then actually in the special meeting, we'll appoint you to that, right, Eric? Thank you, guys, appreciate that. Thanks for volunteering. Oh, come on up, Liz.
I didn't, I didn't, I want to let the team know, Mr. Mayor, so I didn't see who it was.
Oh, Matt and Kyle.
And it's fun.
Sounds like it. If Liz is involved, it's fun.
It was implied.
We're reading water, we get fun. Matt never reads.
Thank you, too, for volunteering, appreciate it. A point, excuse me, agenda review. Zulima, I'm going to start with you, see if there's anything you want to go over from the agenda for the next few weeks.
Mayor, thank you. I did want to point out that in the pre-meeting next week, we do intend to talk to you about a draft of our anti-bullying policy, so that's a discussion I know that you've been waiting for. So if you're pleased to bring that item forward in the very near future, I don't know anything else.
Anything from the council coming up next week or following weeks, work sessions? All right, let's go ahead and move into our special meeting. I now call the September ninth, twenty-twenty-five special council meeting to order. The chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, excuse the absence of Counselor Jensen. Oh my gosh, I forgot about round the table. How's everybody feel about round the table? Kyle, do you have a lot of stuff you want to go?
Excellent.
Wanted to say, go ahead.
Sure.
If you have something you really want to dive into, let me know. Sorry about that.
It won't be the last reminder I give, but I wanted to make sure people were aware. Tuesday, September thirtieth, from five to seven, Forecast for Museum. Unfortunately, that takes place at the same exact time as our meeting, but unless that's the fifth Tuesday, I don't know. Is it? Maybe I'll go. But Tuesday, September thirtieth, five to seven, Forecast for Museum, the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, is going to have a public meeting, open house, regarding the Robertson Road Corridor Study. I would highly encourage folks to attend, especially to share their recent experiences in the target area. I expressed some concerns about the opening of the new Wyoming Classical Academy in that area, and it was one of the reasons I voted no on the sale of Trivet. one of the reasons I voted no on the sale of Trivet and Robertson Road parcels. My own personal experience since the school year I started is school drop off around 7:30 or 7:45. And I'm sure school pickup too, but I, I'm never in the area around that time. That four-way stop is woefully inadequate. It, in the past, you might be stuck behind one, two, maybe three cars at most. And now if you are in that area at 7:30, 7:45, it's 20 cars deep. It's taken multiple minutes to get through that four-way stop. I'm worried any increased traffic is going to necessitate a street light installation or, or something like that. I just don't feel like that four-way stop is appropriately handling that kind of traffic, at least during those peak times. Again, all the other times that when I go home, I'm going to be the only one at that four-way stop when I stop. So, so it's just peak times during the day. But certainly folks that live closer to that area or maybe know what the area looks like around that, you know, 3:30-ish school pickup. If you got thoughts at all, I would encourage you to show up because it'll help inform our study and any future decisions we make as a body. So.
That's the MPO.
That is MPO, September 30th, 5 to 7, Forecast for Museum.
Thank you, Kyle.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything they want to share really quick for our discussion?
So the fire department in community 9/11, the stair climb up at the event center.
Thank you for that reminder. Forgot about that.
Not that I'll.
Don't participate in any. I think you can do it.
Such great shape.
I don't know if I could do that. It's a tough challenge.
Yeah.
And then United Way kickoff is that same time period.
Thanks, Peter. Appreciate the updates. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you for the reminder. All right, now, now we can do that. I now call the September 9th, 2025 special council meeting to order. Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, excuse the absence of Councilor Jensen. Moved by Councilor Pollock, seconded by Councilor Haskins. Any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Chair would entertain a motion to, by consent action, appoint Councilors Larson and Counselor, Counselor Gamro to the Board of Appeals concerning the abatement and dangerous buildings. Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Counselor Bond. Any abstentions or nay votes? Yes, sorry. If you were, yeah, please abstain. All voting aye, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Am I going to wait till next week?
No, let's pass. They're start, they're done.
You got work to do. We can't mess around.
They're in. And now Liz is going to say, sorry, it's a weekly three-hour meeting, starting at seven in the morning. Notice of an executive session to take place at this date and during this meeting was given, and we have matters to discuss regarding personnel. Therefore, the chair, chair would entertain a motion to adjourn it to an executive session. And at the conclusion of that executive session, to reconvene the special meeting solely for the purposes of adjournment of this special meeting. Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Counselor Bond. There are a majority of members present, and a motion to adjourn to an executive session has been moved and seconded. This motion requires two-thirds majority of the council present. Any abstentions or nay votes? All voting aye, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Greater, two, greater than two-thirds majority of the council present voted for the motion, and we are hereby adjourned to an executive session.